Yeah, no, I apologize for that. So Commissioner August will be joining via video. Let's see, all right, so it is 5:30 and with that I will call to order the West Fargo Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, February fourteenth. Second Order of Business, the approval of the minutes from last meeting on January tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from last month as published. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Minutes approved. Okay, item number three, it's a public hearing, A twenty-three dash four, Sand Hill Sixth Edition, a re-plot and rezoning from A agricultural to light industrial and P, uh, public facilities of auditors lot three, re-plot of all of block two, lots six through sixteen, block three, lots two through seven, and ten through twenty-two of block four, lots ten and thirteen of block eight, lots three through ten, and thirteen through twenty-two of block nine, all of blocks ten and eleven, all in Meadow Brook Park subdivision, a vacation plot of part of Grease Avenue and all of Second Avenue North, part of First Avenue North, and then all of Northern Pacific Avenue and part of Park Boulevard, all in Meadow Brook Park subdivision, all in the southeast quarter of Section Two, Township one thirty-nine North, Range fifty West, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, Ocho Indy LLC. Hopefully I got that right.
Thank you, and before I dive into that, I just want to mention, I do believe that we have Elena on the Zoom call as well.
Okay.
You might be able to talk though or participate in the meeting, but we have a quorum either way, so.
Yeah, I heard she's having, well, challenges with the voice. I don't know if there's any way for her to participate through text on the, um, sending a message or something like that through the Teams meeting? We'll continue, since we have a quorum with Commissioner Gust as the fourth.
Sounds good, so.
I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move my phone so you can see, you can hear the other people better.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Speak up.
Okay. All right. So this item is titled Sand Hill Sixth Edition. This is a request for subdivision and rezoning for the property generally located north of Main Avenue slash I ninety-four, just west of Twenty-Sixth Street. And I'll pull up a visual here so you guys can see what I'm referencing here, and then generally west of Twenty-Sixth Street Northwest in West Fargo. This application is represented by Tim Gleason and Austin Morris with Enclave Development, who are present should you have any questions for the applicant. The overall purpose of this request for subdivision and rezone is to pave the way for future industrial development of the subject property. Before I dive in, there's a lot going on with this, so I'll try and kind of break it up into little pieces and walk through this as best I can, but before I do that, I'll provide a little bit of, kind of a broad background for you guys. The majority of the subject property was originally platted when this property was in the county back in nineteen fifty-three, prior to your incorporation into the City of West Fargo in two thousand and four. However, very little of the rural residential subdivision was ever actually developed. When this was platted back in the nineteen fifties, it was originally platted for residential lots, so they were pretty small in size, as you can see on the original plat. The applicant has acquired multiple lots and properties within the Meadow Brook Park subdivision, as well as some of the adjacent unplatted property just west of the original nineteen fifties subdivision. If you can see my cursor here, that area is unplatted currently. And they're looking to consolidate and essentially reconfigure the existing lots and right-of-way in order to allow for future development of the subject property. The proposed subdivision includes the plating of unplatted property, replating of existing lots, vacation of existing public right-of-way, dedication of new right-of-way, renaming of streets, as well as some, uh, reconfiguration of an existing city-owned stormwater pond. The plat includes consideration for a potential future interchange connection to Twenty-Sixth Street and I ninety-four, which was identified as a potential transportation project in need as part of the Northwest Metropolitan Transportation Study, which was completed in partnership with MetroCog and some of our neighboring jurisdictions back in the year two thousand, or excuse me, two thousand and twenty. So with that, kind of broad overview, I'll pull up the subdivision plat here and try and orient everybody with what's going on here. Maybe actually I'll scroll down to this first graphic. So the subdivision itself is broken up into three blocks. Block one and block two are located on the north side of what's labeled as Third Avenue Northwest on the plat here. Those are the areas in green. The green represents a proposed rezone from its current zoning designation of A agricultural to the proposed zoning designation of P, uh, public facilities. The area in green is where the applicant is proposing to reconfigure and expand, um, an exist, or a regional stormwater pond for the development. The area south of Third Avenue is block three, the area in purple there on the graphic. This area is proposed to be rezoned from its current zoning designation of agricultural to the proposed zoning district of LI, which is our light industrial zoning designation. Scrolling back to the plat here quick, all, um, so block three is where the intended industrial development would take place. Blocks one and two would be, again, stormwater, land utilized for stormwater for servicing of the development itself. For the most part, all the lots abut public right-of-way and would be serviced as such. However, I will call your attention to lots four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, uh, which are located here, if you can see my cursor. Lots four, five, eight, and nine do not abut public right-of-way, and they would be serviced through a fifty-foot access and utility easement through private infrastructure and a private drive. So that's how these lots down here would be serviced or access public services. Next, I'll scroll down to an additional graphic that's included in your meeting packet. This one's got a lot going on, so I'll, I'll kind of walk you through this one here now. So maybe to start with the, the public right-of-way, again, the Meadow Brook Park subdivision, which was originally platted in nineteen fifty-three, includes these little lots here, as well as a system of public fifty-foot wide public right-of-way, which were intended to be the streets that would service those lots. Public infrastructure was never installed within these public rights-of-way, and the entire area, for the most part, has remained predominantly vacant, except for a handful of residential properties which have developed over the years. The areas in red are existing public right-of-way, which are proposed to be vacated with this plat. Those include portions of Fifth, or excuse me, First Avenue Northwest, and then Northern Pacific Avenue Northwest, as well as a section of Park Boulevard here, north-south. The areas in gray, such as the east section of First Avenue, east section of Northern Pacific, and then portions of what's labeled as Third Avenue here, those are existing rights-of-way that are proposed to remain public right-of-way. The areas in light green are areas of dedication for additional public right-of-way. Again, when this, when the original nineteen fifties plat was approved, the right-of-way was fifty-foot wide. Today's, our current subdivision standards for commercial and industrial development includes a, or has a minimum right-of-way width standard of eighty feet, and so there's additional dedication of thirty feet, approximately for the most part, to bring the public right-of-way that is intended to have, uh, public streets on it up to that eighty-foot standard. Going over to the east side of Third Avenue Northwest here, you can see my cursor there, there is a proposed, um, kind of deviation from that eighty-foot standard, some additional right-of-way dedication on the north side, and the reason for that is to align the Third Avenue right-of-way on the west side of Twenty-Sixth Street with the existing Third Avenue right-of-way on the east side of Twenty-Sixth Street, so that there's not an offset intersection there that can just be a aligned intersection. So the intention is to swing the road up to the north to make that, to align those intersections. The area in light blue on block two, as well as this red hatched area in purple just below it, that's the area where there's an existing city stormwater pond for, that was put in place as part of the Sand Hill's Third Edition, which is the industrial area just to the north of, of the subject property. With the addition of the proposed development here, the areas in dark blue are intended to be areas where, for that stormwater expansion that I mentioned previously. The hatched area of the existing pond is intended to be reconfigured and dedicated for part of that Third Avenue to allow the wider right-of-way, as well as for the right-of-way to swing up to the north, again, to align with Third Avenue on the east side of Twenty-Sixth Avenue, or Twenty-Sixth Street. The lot ten of block three, which is the southeast lot here, that's this tan, as well as the, the green area here. The city has been in, having conversations with the applicant as part of any new subdivision. There is a public land dedication requirement for industrial-type developments. That dedication requirement is typically five percent of the land area. And so, again, and I'll, I'll touch on this in a little bit, but there is a identified need for right-of-way preservation for Twenty-Sixth Street, um, which I'll circle back to in a little bit here. So that's, that's what's going on with this graphic here, and next, I guess I'll immediately, I'll immediately jump into the Twenty-Sixth Street discussion. So as I mentioned when I started, back in two thousand and twenty, there was MetroCog in partnership with the City of Fargo, City of West Fargo, and I think some of the smaller jurisdictions adjacent teamed up to put together, or to work through MetroCog to put together the Northwest Metropolitan Transportation Plan. The purpose of this study was to take a look at the area predominantly north of West Fargo, west of Fargo, the future growth area within the diversion alignment, in order to identify transportation needs in advance of any, you know, future build-out, future development within that area at a regional level. And so it took a very high-level look at future right-of-way corridors, existing infrastructure, what the future need for, for future roadways will be, what the future, you know, land development type, you know, may be in that area in order to anticipate kind of some, some long-range timing and, and just to get a general handling, handle on what the future infrastructure needs will be from a transportation component. One of the areas that was identified through this is that there are a lot of barriers to transportation, particularly in this area. The subject property is, on the south side is I ninety-four, south of that is the Cheyenne diversion. The Cheyenne diversion kind of wraps around this entire area, and then there's a BNSF railroad track that runs adjacent to that, all of which create, you know, pretty significant barriers for any, any form of connectivity and, and future roadway need for, for future development. And so as you look to the north of this area, as well as to the south of I ninety-four, those are areas will someday be within the FM diversion alignment. You know, fifty years from now, that those areas will likely be developed or developing, and there will be a need for connectivity in those areas. And so recognizing some of the barriers to transportation and some of the, you know, potential bottlenecks, if you will, in the transportation network, this study did take a closer look at some potential options for relieving some of those bottlenecks, one of which being Twenty-Sixth Street Northwest, which is, again, the street that is immediately adjacent to the east side of the subject property here. I will note this is a very, very conceptual, but this graphic here kind of illustrates the intention, which would be taking Twenty-Sixth Street and reconfiguring the Main Avenue, I ninety-four interchange, in order to provide some connectivity to the interchange, as well as some north-south connectivity across the Cheyenne diversion to future growth areas to the south, as well as future growth areas as you go north. Twenty-Sixth Street is a section-lined road, and so typically those are, are arterial roads, such as, you know, Veterans, your Forty-Fifth, your Thirteenth Avenues. And so there is a very real potential that this would be a very high-traveled corridor in the future, and there's a very real potential that interchange modification may be warranted someday in the, you know, very distant future. It's not anytime soon, but because this property is developing in front of us, there is a, a need for us to take a look at potential needs to preserve right-of-way for if and when that day does come to pass. And so the city has, staff has been working with the developer on potential scenarios or options for acquiring the southeast portion of the subject property for right-of-way preservation purposes. Those are, I will say, ongoing discussions, and so within the recommendation, you will see that there's, the recommendation here is conditioned on continued discussions with the city staff, as well as the city commission, on those potential needs. There's still, you know, some discussion that needs to, to take place, but in order to further advance that discussion, the city engineering department did contract with a transportation consultant to take a look at several different scenarios for, to try and get a, a better sense of how much land might actually be needed. And so that, that process was done, and kind of the lot ten of block three is what was identified as kind of the most likely scenario for future right-of-way need. So that's, that's that item. Also included as part of this subdivision, as I mentioned earlier, there's a street name change proposed. So what's currently labeled as Third Avenue Northwest on the subdivision plat, or what's proposed as Third Avenue Northwest on the subdivision plat, I should say, currently exists as Second Avenue Northwest, and so the intention is to rename that street simply for connectivity or continuation of the Third Avenue Northwest name as it exists east of Twenty-Sixth, Twenty-Sixth Street. So we didn't want a street to be Third Avenue on one side of the street and Second Avenue on the other side of the street. So I would call your attention to that as well. Also included is some requests for subdivision variance, and what subdivision variance is, it's not a, a true variance in the sense of, you know, a typical variance. Subdivision variance is, in essence, just a request to deviate from the subdivision standards as outlined in the subdivision ordinance. And so again, that's things like having a right-of-way that's wider than eighty feet for Third Avenue, as I noted previously. I would point out too, that there is, with this configuration, a little remnant piece of, of Second Avenue right-of-way here, um, just to kind of call out that, that as well. This is a very unique situation. You know, we don't typically have a rural residential subdivision, you know, platted in the fifties that, that, you know, hasn't really developed over the years and is now developing as an industrial park, and so it is, you know, somewhat expected that we have to kind of identify and, and work through some of those unique aspects of these developments as they come through the process. So that's, that's kind of the overview of what is being proposed. As far as process, we did send out our typical notifications to property owners within one hundred and fifty feet of the subject property. We did receive a couple of phone calls, as well as an email, as, as noted in the staff report. We also did receive one additional email, which you should have received as a laid-out item as well. The two written comments that we received did express some concern with the proposed development. Again, there are a handful of residences within this area who weren't too thrilled to see areas around them developing for industrial development. Of the calls we received, one just had questions, and then the other was an adjacent property owner that was also interested in rezoning their property to limited industrial and just wanting to, to know more about the process. As far as consistency with the comprehensive plan, as, as outlined in the staff report there, the, I kind of went over some of the connectivity issues, which, which the current comprehensive plan talks a lot about in relation to Twenty-Sixth Street. From a land use standpoint, the West Fargo two-point-oh comprehensive plan does not have a land use component per se. However, it is worth noting that the, the previous two comprehensive plans done in, I think, the year two thousand and the year two thousand and eight, both did include a land use component, and both of those plans did identify this area for future industrial development. And again, I touched on the Northwest Transportation Plan already, so I'll kind of skip ahead here. So with that, staff has found that the, the proposed rezoning and, and subdivision are in alignment with city ordinances and, and comprehensive plan. The recommendation included in your, is included in your staff report and does, again, include a recommendation for approval, with the condition that the applicant continues to work with staff in the city on the, in regards to the acquisition or potential acquisition of lot ten, block three, and the assigned public dedication agreement and subdivision development agreement are submitted, outlining those details prior to final consideration by the, the city commission. So with that, I'll, I'll stop talking here and let you guys ask any questions you might have with staff.
I did have one quick question. You mentioned the subdivision variances, and you just listed one item. Is that spelled out anywhere specifically?
Yeah.
Or what items?
So it's spelled out in the staff report here, and I apologize if I glossed over that.
Those three bullets there?
Yep.
Those are the variances that you referenced?
Yep. So yeah, it's the additional width for Third Avenue Northwest. Some of the existing right-of-way would remain as, as fifty feet. So that's First Avenue, Northern Pacific Avenue, and Grass Avenue, and I can shoot over the subdivision, subdivision plat here. So First Avenue is right here. This would potentially remain as, as fifty feet, as well as Northern Pacific Avenue. There is no intention for those rights-of-way to be improved with streets or infrastructure at this time, which is why the applicant is, is requesting that they remain as fifty feet and they not dedicate additional right-of-way. Additionally, I will say that that's, that, that does enter into the conversation that we're having with the applicant in terms of acquiring, potentially acquiring lot ten, and so some of those details are, are still being worked out as part of that negotiation process for the, the dedication. And the last thing was that remnant piece of Second Avenue North, which is just west of Thirtieth Street, or the proposed Thirtieth Street right-of-way. The applicant does not own the property to the north here, and I think, I believe they did reach out to the property owner to the north to see if there was any interest in, in them joining in on this in order to vacate that little remnant piece, but I don't believe that the neighboring property owner was super interested at this point in time, and so we just call it out that it's, you know, it doesn't hurt anything staying there, just wanted to point it out.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair David Gus, can you hear my audio yet?
So this is a public hearing, and as such, I will open it up for comment from the public at this time. A couple of notes of protocol. I ask that anybody that does speak, comes up, identifies themselves, name where they're from, and addresses it to the council.
My name's Amanda Barker, and I'm the daughter of Tim Cocaine, and my stepmom is Leah Cocaine, and they live at two oh four Park Boulevard in West Fargo. Can I scroll to the map?
Sure.
Is that okay?
We can pull up whatever.
So, right here, this little square is their house, their property right here, that this whole industrial, light industrial proposal is being planned around. My dad and stepmom have been residents at two oh four Park Boulevard since nineteen ninety-nine. I am here today to express my concern regarding the lack of action and lack of collaboration the industrial developers have had with the residents. Additionally, my concerns also extend to the lack of action the city elected officials part, as, as you are currently allowing this injustice to occur on the residents. When my dad and stepmom first moved into their property in nineteen ninety-nine, it was not part of the city, but protected by the diversion, which was part of the appeal to the property. At the time, they purchased their roughly eighteen-hundred-square-foot house with one-and-a-half-acre lot, which included three bedrooms, one-and-a-half bathrooms, a living room, kitchen, den, and garage, for eighty-six thousand dollars. When roughly calculating out a thirty-year mortgage, not including homeowner's insurance, taxes, et cetera, the payment would be approximately two hundred and forty-six dollars per month with a three percent interest rate on a thirty-year mortgage. Before having completely paying off their home, they were making monthly payments of approximately sixteen hundred dollars to include their interest, homeowner's insurance, taxes, et cetera. The residents were annexed into the city in two thousand and four. When concern was expressed by the residents about being annexed in, rezoning, future development, and the potential cost of those developments that would impact the residents, the residents were told not to worry, that they would be gone before any development would begin. While rezoning and development did begin, without ensuring the residents were properly relocated. Again, when development began to the north of the residents, concerns were raised another time. There is a video record of a city official stating that these specials would not impact the residents. This has not been the case. In two thousand and sixteen, my dad's property taxes, it had no specials included on it, were one thousand, three hundred dollars and one cent for the year, and they have continued to increase then due to specials caused by the industrial developments. His two thousand and twenty-two tax bill that he just received was four thousand, three hundred, thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents, a two hundred and thirty-three-point-eight percent increase from two thousand and sixteen. If this payment was spread out over the twelve months of the year, it would come out at three hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-six cents, forty-seven percent more than the approximate bare-bones mortgage payment of two hundred and forty-six dollars. On top of their own individual property taxes, the residents have to divide property taxes for their well, which provides them with water. There are currently five remaining residents that the well property taxes are divided amongst. In two thousand and sixteen, the well property tax was a hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-five cents, not including any specials. The property tax that was received recently for the two thousand and twenty-two year is one thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents, an eight hundred and thirty-nine-point-seven-five percent increase, on top of their own individual property taxes that have grown an unprecedented and unethical amount due to the development of the industrial park. Each resident pays two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents for their property taxes on the well. Let's not forget the easement they currently have on the well property. Since the development of the industrial park in the residents' areas, their property taxes have continued to increase to unreasonable amounts, despite there being a video record by a city official promising that the growth of the industrial park would not have an impact on the residents in this area, and that prior to development beginning, the residents would be moved first. Unable to sell their house, because who wants to live in an industrial park with outrageous property taxes, the residents have been forced to try to wait out a fair offer to come from developers, and simply hope that city officials would have stayed true to their word and ensure the residents would not be impacted by the specials from the developments. Instead, the residents are paying the unreasonably-priced specials for the industrial developments that have occurred while only being offered a minimal value for the property, not including their residents. Plans have been proposed to conduct rezoning for light industrial lots that will enclose the remaining residential properties, rezoning entirely around their properties, to include my dad's property, with small cutouts on the plans where the residents' properties are. This will surely see more increases in property taxes due to specials, especially since one of those roads includes the widening of my dad's street, Park Boulevard, right here, right where his property is. Let's also mention that my dad has eight grandchildren who love to play in the yard at his house. He has a beautiful koi pond, and adding these additional streets without relocating the residents first is gonna make that a dangerous situation for those eight grandchildren to play outside. The residents have worked hard to have a property which should be an asset, especially as a potential development lot. Many residents, having paid off their properties, to include my dad and stepmom, instead, the residents are being unjustly taxed, which is causing a burden on all the residents to the point where some can't afford the taxes placed on them. residents to the point where some can't afford the taxes placed on them due to the specials they're paying for the industrial development, which many would suggest appears to be the ultimate goal. The industrial developers, developers are pushing the residents out of their homes, forcing them to be delinquent on their taxes and possibly foreclose on their homes. Without intervention from the city, the developers will continue to wait out their time, refusing to make fair offers to the residents until the residents simply can't afford to pay their taxes on their property anymore and lose their property and home. Then they will have lost their hard-earned asset. Again, when these concerns were brought up in two thousand four, and again, each time rezoning and development began, the residents were told that they would not be impacted by this or would be relocated prior to development beginning. I have two questions for you as well as two proposals to rectify the current situation. My first question, would you like to continue to live on your property if it was rezoned and turning into an industrial park? How would you feel if one of your family members had to pay for these specials while not being able to sell their home? My two proposals, have the developers immediately offer the residents a fair amount of money for their house and property to then allow for further development. My dad and stepdad, mom are willing to move. Reasonably, they want to ensure that they can have the same type of residence, an approximately eighteen hundred square foot house with three bedrooms, one and a half bath, living room, kitchen, garage, and a den on a half acre property. My second proposal, have the developers incur the cost of specials, ongoing and for the last two years, that have been unjustly put on the residents' responsibility, and halt all further development until the residents have been offered fair settlements to relocate.
Point of clarification, you don't have to get up. The well, we don't, the city doesn't own that well, right? That is a community? Could you hold one second, sir?
Yeah, that, I'm understanding that's a private well that the city is.
That's a private well, and that has changed because of the infrastructure they've had to invest to keep it going, right? Something like that?
I will let them, I guess, respond to that.
All right. But the city does not manage that or have input into the well?
That's correct, Commissioner. As far as I'm aware, that's a private well, privately maintained, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. Thank you for clarification.
My name is Robin Hovde. I'm president of Meadowbrook Road and Water, which includes the well, the easement on the well, ten feet on the other side of our, our underground lines. And I'd just like to touch base, last time, during the last rezoning and all the construction that was out there, I was out of water several times during this because they keep digging up our water. And they say they won't do it, but you know, a handshake and a, it won't happen, isn't going to fly this time around, so. I just wanted to point that out. We do have underground water throughout most of that neighborhood. I do not have the map with me, but it has to be something that's recognized for any future development out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, Commissioner, one clarification, not a city-owned utility. I apologize for that.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Hi, my name is Xavier Walty. I'm a Realtor here. I've been representing the residents here on Gress Avenue for the last year and a half. You know, the biggest challenge here that I've been seeing with the residents and the lots is the sellability. You know, there's no clear answer as to what people can do, what the seller, or like the sellers can do to, you know, increase the sellability. They can't make improvements. They have homes on there. You know, they have depreciating assets that are, you know, they look like slums right now, but for the most part, they were a home at one point for most of these people. They have no idea how they can get it sold. I've brought individuals here to the West Fargo Specialist, and without clarification, walking away with more questions and answers as to what could be done to remediate the You know, a lot of frustration is put on, you know, the fact that they're being specialled out essentially. You know, there's lots over there that are two acres, three acres, and they have just as many specials as the half acre lots that can't even be built on, can't even be lived in. You know, people are being fined for even making small repairs to roofs, fixing up minor problems in their homes, and it's caused a lot of people to just walk away. I've sold one property over there, and took a lot of work, and it was to another resident on Gress Avenue who kind of understood the situation, but nowhere else could you have found a quarter acre lot in the city of West Fargo near the interstate, next to all this new development for less than twenty thousand dollars? And I guess we're just asking for, you know, rectification and clarification on what can be done and how this can be solved to keep money in the people's pocket living on Gress Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Gibbons. I live in Meadowbrook. And there was comprehensive plans in two thousand and two and two thousand and eight, and both by the Fargo Morehead Planning and Zoning Committee suggested in those things, because I have copies of them, that the city of West Fargo scrape off, buy all the residents out, and scrape all that off and replat it and sell it to developers. And they denied it both times. Now, by doing that, they left us there, and like she said, all the meetings that we went to, we were assured we would not be there when all this happened. And now we are, we're still there. And then you start spot zoning and developing, and then these specials came, and it put a lot of people in hardship. There was a lot more residents out there. A lot of them just bailed out, some of them sold for whatever they could get. They're losing on their investment, I mean, that's their home, and they felt like they couldn't pay it anymore, and it was a ridiculous amount. I don't know what she was saying, two hundred and something percent. Mine were five hundred dollars on this lot, and now they're five thousand dollars. And this has been going on for, since twenty sixteen, I guess, and I have another lot next to it, and that was a hundred dollars because there's nothing on it. And now it's four thousand, eight hundred and something dollars. And it, and it puts people in hardship, you know? I've paid them all these years, and I'm almost paying for everything. I'm going to end up, however long this goes, I'll end up paying for it twice, or I'm going to lose everything that I have. That's all I have. And I don't want to see stuff keep going on and us be there. I, I want to see something go on and me not be there or any of the other residents. I mean, it's not fair what's going on. It's not Valentine's Day, it's Bleeding Hearts Day over here right now. Seriously, it's, it's something that, we were always told we wouldn't be there, and I thought the King always took care of his subjects. Well, the King being the city is not even looking at us. They're just pushing us aside, just letting it, letting it go since we're out of the vision of everybody. We're just off to the side of the road to them. That, that property is worth quite a bit of money. There's a diversion all the way around it. There's no way we flood out anymore. You know, that, that's prime location right there. And all's we want, and all's we ever wanted since the very beginning was replacement value for our homes. That's it. Progress could go on, just help us out. Don't not look at us, look at us and help us. So I'm saying progress is okay, but it's not okay what's happening to us and been happening for years now. It's getting to be, we're, we're kind of wearing out. I mean, the, the plan is almost working, but it's not right. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Tim Gleason with Enclave Development, representative for the developer. So we just got involved in this property, twenty twenty-two. We're excited about the potential for interstate frontage on the south for industrial buildings. We've done a lot of industrial development in Fargo in the past, North Fargo Industrial Park, Frito-Lay's facility, E.W. Wiley's facility, and a handful of other businesses that we've built, some of them we own, others, others we don't, do not in business operation. So we're looking at this site as just a, a great potential for bringing new corporations to West Fargo, new businesses in Class A industrial development. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have for us as the developer, so.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I will close that section. And just to confirm, Dave, you can still hear us?
Yeah, you can hear me.
Yes, all right.
Well, we've been dealing with the situation, with the, with the, my very current planning of the, of the.
Yep.
I, I'm sick of it. This is, this is an embarrassment to the city of West Fargo. I, I mean, if I was a member or a citizen of the city of West Fargo, I'd be embarrassed by this, that, that people are being treated in this manner. This is a taking, and I don't see how you'd see it any other way. I mean, you're, you're building, you're building up this, this industrial park of how many residents, and we have absolutely refused to do anything about it. The city has refused. They just sit here and let this happen and give these people lip service and do absolutely nothing. We, I mean, the, the city would be able to buy out a bunch of property along Zion Street and parking, but, but these people get ignored? I mean, for crying out loud, I'm half a parish to be serving on this zoning commission because of this. I will not vote for any further development here until someone tells me that there's going to be some kind of concerted effort to do something about this and stop just letting these people hang out to dry. I think I'm done.
Duly noted, Commissioner Gus. I'm going to put you on the front here so you can hear if anybody else is talking, but...
Very well.
Okay, so you can hear, are you okay like this? It is interesting. I'm going to maybe speak in opinion here, maybe it's not right to, but I, we have been presented in the past some more changes. I don't know if you were here yet.
I'm not.
I think you may have, the last time we saw it. And the request was always, can we go back, clean up before we move forward with further development and of the industrial park, which was on the docket for quite some time. This is not a new direction. It should not be a surprise. And I, yeah, I'm going to share Commissioner Gus's perspective that it feels partial, half complete in that end.
If I can add, add to that, I, I don't recall all the details, but I was on the commission from two thousand eight to twenty twenty. When this first came up, and I remember we had, there was a lot more residents at the time that lived out there, and there was a lot of discussion about how do we take care of the residents. Now, I can't recall what the solutions were, but to your point and Commissioner Gus's point, one of the things that was highly stressed and comments made at that time is they got to deal with these residents and work out something that works for them. And I, I tend to agree with what's happening here. It's got to the point, initially, the north, and it sounds like they're two different developers, whoever did the north is different than this one. And the north, I know we talked to some, there's a house, I think, on the corner of that northern one where they decided to stay, they had discussions, and the, the owner there decided to stay. But from what I see on this, yeah, I, I think ultimately this is probably the best use out there, and it's what it's going to be, but I, it looks like they're just going around all the properties, and I agree, leaving them hanging. They, they can't sell it unless they sell it to the industrial site, and you know, and as that, if we approve this as it is, it's going to develop a certain way. And then what value do those houses have within that development? Because all of a sudden now you got smaller lots that are pieced in there. So I guess I, I tend to agree with you, Mr. Coob, and what Mr. Gus has said as well. These developers need to work something out with these people, even if it's agreement that they're going to stay there and keep their house, and they understand the circumstances. But I, I don't feel good about just cutting, cookie cutting around them to accommodate expansion, so that's my personal opinion as well.
I think the unfortunate part is, is, you know, it seems to, you know, staff recommendations and the recommendations of, and the comments that we have through here, developers are following, what we call the city, on, on developing everything out here, but as the unfortunate part, you do have these residents out here, and I just don't know, you probably will never know what negotiations have been attempted or have been made from the developer to these private residents. So it's, it's, you know, it's kind of a sticky situation when you're following all the rules, but you do have a really interesting development here that's, that's trying to take place. You look all around it with all the industrial development, there's no place for it to go but to the industrial development and their commercial development. But, you know, with the few residents left in there, I guess, like I said, it's, it's hard to say what the negotiations have been, and I'm sure there has been some. That's my, one of my questions to the developer is, when was the last time a negotiation was, was, you know, talked about or, or meetings with these residents? They're still on site?
Yeah, we, we had talked to them back in November, December, and hadn't pursued ongoing, going negotiations beyond that point. We'd be happy to, to discuss more, but with the current phase of this development, those properties aren't, aren't required, and Austin's here with Enclave to, to describe more, but. Additionally, I will add that we are looking at a, a tax increment financing district for these public improvements, which have been approved by the Economic Development Advisory Committee of West Fargo. That would actually, the industrial development would actually cover all the special assessments that are included within this, the, the future petition for right-of-way improvements, which is the, the paving and all the utilities needed to serve this infrastructure. So I would add that the plan is to utilize that tax increment financing, not for the benefit of Enclave, but the benefit of the whole improvement district to cover those future specials, which I don't believe, or I don't know if that was the case in the past, so.
Thank you. I see some individuals eager to provide input and perhaps answer that question. I'll allow it, we'll open it up again if you wish to perhaps address that question. Yes, sir?
I did have one question, Mr. Chair. Something to, 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 to.
Five occupied, five that are occupied by residents. Some people have had to abandon the residents because they can't.
Yeah, I believe that's the number I heard in the past, was five. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So I can't speak for all the residents, but my dad and stepmom received one letter from Enclave in twenty twenty-two and told them to contact them if they'd like to talk about a potential offer. My dad reached out and never got a response, ever.
Thank you.
All of the residents had received letters from Enclave. I had reached out multiple times with Enclave specifically to talk to Tim, never received a response back, only got a... Never received a response back, only got his assistant, was promised calls, but no answer, just letters one time. We have had other offers, but again, it was developers lowballing residents and not offering fair value to the residents to buy their home or land, whatever they wanna call it. But.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and like you said, I'm not sure where we go with that. That's not really our spot to put these negotiations out there.
Yes, sir, you are?
Austin Morris, Enclave Development. I just wanted to provide a very brief history, because it's, I think, context is nice. So this development has been, we got involved last fall. This whole land mass was an assemblage by prior individuals. So when we got involved last fall and brought it to the city as an appropriate use for industrial, we did reach out to, by letter, sent letters to every resident or every lot owner out here. Some within the city, some were residents at that location, some live outside of the city and some even out of state. We did acquire a number of properties through that process. The biggest challenge is land, acquiring the land, if somebody didn't have a structure on it for a price that would be a similar price you'd pay for industrial land anywhere else within the city, is possible. Biggest challenger hurdle is acquiring a residence that, from a replacement cost value, is substantially more than that. So what we picked up specifically, when you look at our master plan, this isn't showing it, but we picked up the properties necessary to pursue the development to the south, install the infrastructure on Third going north to Fourth. And then our next modus, or our priority, was met with the city and said, "We can't move forward with this project unless there is zero special assessment impact on any residences or landowners to the north of us." And through that plan, we put retention on some of the lots we owned or acquired surrounding those residents. But again, the biggest hurdle is the remaining homes is the biggest hurdle, because we can't acquire a home at a value of $15 a foot when industrial land sells for $3 a foot. That's a challenge. So our goal was, how can we eliminate the possibility that the residents would be hit with any additional special assessments as a result of our work to the south? So I just wanted that clear, that when we came in and what our goal was to try and create something where we weren't having a negative financial impact on people. So, thank you.
Just a question, and perhaps, John, you can answer this, maybe not. Is there any, with this proposed development, is there any economic development funds being applied towards this? And if so, or if not, could they be? I mean, would seem a reasonable possibility, and that's not for this board to decide. That's a city commission decision whether or not assistance could be made to get this done once and for all, perhaps utilizing economic development funds.
So my understanding is that the concept is gonna be used to the public infrastructure. I guess I haven't been approached by maybe a broader base plan for the area without knowing what the negotiation numbers for the houses are then. I need to better understand that to see what programs will be available to the city, and obviously, the city leadership would have to agree to it. There are options available. I guess just to set understandings is that if, if a house is, usually the city would pay fair market value for a house, which might be different than the replacement value. Fair market value for a house would be $200,000, and a brand-new replacement cost might be $500,000. The city would normally pay the fair market value. And so, without understanding what the values are, what the offers are out there, we'd wanna put together a budget, have discussions with the city about what types of technology development could be utilized, if you could acquire all the properties, or like a, you know, just getting out loud, potentially be a fifth district for the whole area and incorporate some of those comps. That's a, I can't make that decision, I can't really advise on it, but there are potential options. And I just wanna be clear that I can't, I can't say yes or no, I can just say that there are options.
And we can't decide either.
No, we don't have the decision. I just wanna make sure that we've crossed every bridge as a city and looked at every opportunity to... It sounds like, according to the gentleman from Enclave, this is gonna be a very desirable development for industrial property, which it would be. So I would think they have a strong interest, and perhaps from the city's perspective, the residents out there have gone through a long process, and they want some closure of some sort that's reasonable. I'm not saying the city just comes in and buys them all out, but it's part of the whole package, whether it's what the contribution is from the developers, the city, combination thereof, we can finally get this done. Otherwise, we're gonna work around them now, and then we're gonna be right back here at some point when someone else wants to build a little more industrial out there, rezonate or whatever. So that's just a comment. Again, as the chairperson has noted, that's not our decision, that's a, that comes from the higher level, so.
Yeah, that's the city council.
I'm clearly happy to reach out to the leadership of our city. If you're interested in, just to set expectations, I can't make any promises or whatever.
And my only point is, we should explore every option while, at this point, not, again, be kicking at least part of the can down the road again.
So with that, what say you? As far as this specific proposal, which is...
First, I would say I would make a motion to deny it with the caveat under the comment that I'd like the city to explore other options to try to, which I say, develop this as a whole.
My question on the process is if this, if this goes through or gets denied, this goes to the city commission now for this, correct?
Certainly does.
And then the city commission can do what they need to do as far as making a decision or further with the developers. Some way, it's gotta move forward at some point. And I don't know what the best way to move that forward is for the people, for the developers, for the residents out there, but it's gotta get to the city commission. And they're the decision-makers really on the happening out there.
Yeah, especially when there's, when we talk about funds being allocated to enable it. We, you know, that is certainly...
And as I look at it, like I said, the tough part is the developer, everybody's following the rules that are set forth. It's a very unique situation out there.
It is.
But just as far as moving the process forward, I would, I would vote for this to go forward.
Okay. Yes, John?
I just have one, I have one question for the developer, if you have objection. I kinda feel like we might need a, need more comfortated through the party, through this information, if there's ability to do something during the hearing. If the developer, it's necessary to keep moving forward, if the commission could table it for all the next meeting, so that the staff could explore about the leadership, get a little more information. It's up to the developers there.
I would say we wanna do it right. I mean, we want progress and we wanna move forward with it. Ideally, we'd be able to make progress in the sense of actually getting a building permit by late summer, fall, and that's the challenge with that process. But I wanna do it right. I want, I'd like to understand with this meeting, what are we approving? Are we approving zoning subdivision plat? Or are we approving something different? I think that's one thing that I'd like to work with EDAC, so I'd rather table it than get denied for sure, because I think they're two separate issues, but, yeah.
Okay. Alright, well, let me clarify a few things. We had a motion and a second to deny, and we did not vote on it. You indicated support, so obviously you would be voting against.
As per the call, may I resend my motion and move to table it? And hopefully, progress can be made between now and the next hearing towards the concerns expressed, I believe, by the commission here and others, so.
Yeah, I'd like to then, Commissioner August, you seconded the initial motion. Did you hear what we're proposing to change that to?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, so it, so we don't have to vote on tabling it, it is something we can just... Yes, Aaron?
Yeah, I guess I would just throw out there, if you are looking to table this item, I think from a staff perspective, we would just be looking for as much information as possible in terms of what you are looking for staff to accomplish between now and next month.
Can I give a shot at that? For the remaining properties that are basically sketched around, be included in rezoning as a result of having found a commercial transaction to transfer ownership for a complete area as opposed to partial. That's what I would, then it's done. And that would include all the properties that are affected in this area, including the well services, or I forget what it's called. It, again, just my opinion here, this feels partial. It's not complete. It is very desirable, it is certainly in line with what the city wants to do, and we're thankful for, you know, the progress that has been made so far. This is certainly much further along than the last time we were presented with, what was the northern section, and then there were pieces of the southern that we did not approve, I believe, but it's a lot further along. I think that's what we're looking for, is to resolve the last few pieces regarding the other owners of property and homes there.
That's helpful, it's a little, it will be a little...
That may be a little ambitious to accomplish in one month.
That was my question to the developer, is if you really can accomplish any of that within a month.
I'd say most of it would be up to city. I mean, if we're talking EDAC related to home buyouts at, the one thing I am confident about is what we have planned out here and what we will do out here from an economic development perspective. And a gross taxable assessed value will be awesome, and it'll be a wonderful place for businesses and people to work. I think the only clarification I'd say on if we could, and it's not official, I guess, but I'd recommend that the city work with those who have an interest in working with them on some situation like that, because we have had, took, it took months for us to be able to even contact some owners, because out of, all over the United States, because some of these lots were as a result of a raffle from the state fair back in the day. So it was interesting sourcing through how many people still owned lots, still are paying real estate taxes and specials, but had never done anything with them. But I want them to work with those that would have an interest in pursuing those measures where we could figure something out economically that makes sense.
And I think...
I just can't promise a clean map, you know, because...
Well, how about a cleaner map?
Cleaner map.
And the people that are still calling that home be included in the solution.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner August. Alright, so with that, help me out with protocol, John, do I have to have a vote for tabling it? Take a motion?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to table this item until the next meeting. All those in favor, say aye? Thank you. Item number three has been tabled. Thank you, everybody, for your input. I hope through the work over the next month or so, some solutions can be found. Item number four, public hearing, A 23-5 Dakota Territory 14th Edition PUD Amendment for Multiple Dwellings at 1018 17th Street East, Lot 1, Block 1 of Dakota Territory 14th Edition, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, Mission Homes.
Sorry about that. Trying to get to my map. Because Aaron had a lot of documentation with his item.
One second, Lisa, one second. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, if you may, thank you very much, we'll... Go ahead.
Alright, thank you. This application was received in order to accommodate development of residential townhomes within a planned unit development. The applicant has submitted an application and concept plans for proposed townhomes. A similar development was approved for the property to the west in 2016. Concept plans with setbacks show several four- and three-unit townhomes and a two-unit townhome. The applicant indicated that they intend to have balconies with staircases for all the units. Concept plans also show attached garages with parking spaces in front, which exceeds the requirements for city off-street parking. The property would access 10th Avenue East in two locations, which allows for multiple access points and the ability to loop utility services as well as a 40-foot access easement along 14th, or along 17th Street East. There is a shared access easement on the north property line adjacent to 10th Avenue East on the lot to the west, which may or may not be necessary for this development. The time this property was developed, 10th Avenue East and 17th Street were considered collector roadways with access control shown on the recorded plat along 10th Avenue and 17th Street. 10th Avenue East has since been removed as a collector from the functional classification and would no longer be required such access control. However, the access control is still included on the recorded plat. Property owners within 150 feet and departments and applicable agencies were notified. There were no comments from property owners. Engineering recommended not installing the east access onto 10th Avenue East, but will allow it. The city attorney commented on the controlled access on the recorded plat. It is recommended that the city approve the proposed concept development plans on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances, with recommended items to be addressed with the detailed development plans as follows. The site shall conform to the R3 Multiple Dwelling District Regulations as the underlying district standards, unless otherwise indicated and approved with the detailed development plans. A six-foot-tall opaque fence shall be installed on the east property line along 17th Street to screen public right-of-way from the rear of the proposed buildings. A landscape buffer... A landscape buffer shall be planted between the north property line along 10th Avenue and the rear building fronting them. Balconies and decks shall be shown on the detailed development plan with setbacks delineated. A drainage and utility plan is approved by the city engineer. Assigned plan unit development agreement is received and approved in conjunction with the detailed development plan. And the detailed development plan will be subject but not limited to supplementary district regulations, landscaping standards, off-street parking and loading requirements and sign regulations. This is a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions and the developer is also here. What we're asking for tonight is approval of the concept development plans and asking the developer to provide detailed development plans should those concepts be approved.
Thank you. I do have one quick question.
Okay.
The concept plans that are provided in the package that we look through, do they in general meet, or would they be able to meet all the conditions which you spelled out in the recommendations or is that unclear?
For the most part, there are some issues with where the balconies are going to be that needs to be determined. There are some setback requirements. They meet the setback requirement of 12 feet for the side yard facing Seventeenth Street as well as the setbacks, the eight-foot side yard setbacks to the south and to the west. However, if they're showing balconies, they're going to, they're going to go into the setback, the required setback, so.
So not quite.
Not quite.
So it's still some work to do.
They could be requesting with their detailed development plans to be, have the ability to extend into those required yards.
Good. Thank you. So this is a public hearing and open it up for public comment and input at this time. Anybody wish to provide input or has comment? Seeing none, close that section. Commissioners?
I have just a comment. And I, I know it meets all the parking requirements and if everyone used their garages for garages and used their driveway for parking in, I don't think it'd be an issue. And, and again, it meets all the requirements, so I am not gonna deny it for that reason. But if you look at the, the property, which is kind of a mirror to it just to the west, and if you happen to notice on the, the flight or the overlay, the satellite picture they, they get, they provided, there's like, there's 12 cars showing they're parked to the east side on that street. And that street is 30, 30 feet wide roughly. I looked at GIS and the GI, actually, I think if you go Google Maps, it's 15 cars are parked there in midday. And I guess my comment is that this as proposed in the draft, they got 22-foot wide streets and it's an interior street. We don't control that. That's their own private drives. But I think it's gonna be a parking nightmare there. If, if you can use the property to the west, which is 31 units, and this is gonna be 42 units, there are gonna be a parking nightmare. There's no parking on Seventeenth Street East. So some cars will park on 10th, which is okay. That's an extra wide, extra wide street. So I'm just making a comment. It's gonna, and maybe that's, that's their battle to fight, but I'm just saying as a city, when they approve something like that, if you got 15 cars in the base, in midday parked on that wider street to the east side of the existing development, within this new development with more units, you're gonna probably have as many or more cars than that now. And they park on a 22-foot wide street, providing there's no snow or anything else, then the car's backing out because the streets that are available within the development to park on are across from people that are gonna be backing out. So they're backing out onto a 22-foot street with a eight-foot car, you know, roughly, standard parking spot's nine, nine feet roughly, eight and a half. It's gonna be really tight. Now that, again, as the owners of the development, that's gonna be their problem, but just be aware, I think there's gonna be a lot of parking issues with the number of units they got as presented and, and not really an auxiliary parking area within their, their proposed draft of the development. Again, I'm not gonna oppose, I'm just trying to point that out.
Well, I mean, all those streets, those 22, are more or less just driveway. There should, there probably is no parking.
True, but if, as you can see in the one next to it, all those extra cars that are parked to the side, and that's always that way. If you look, if you drive through, there's always cars parked over there. I know people have a lot of cars or, I think a lot of people use.
People have a lot.
Garages as man caves or storage units and they don't use them for parking cars, so they end up parking them somewhere else. So just a comment, it's, it's, again, it's not gonna deter me from saying, okay, no, you meet requirements, so.
And being that this is the concept and they, they are directed to come back with more detailed site plans, that could be a recommendation that they provide additional off-street parking, you know, whether it's, you know, decreasing units or something like that.
And I, I know as a developer, obviously they want to optimize their investment and utilize it, but for instance, that small condo and, or townhome in the middle, if that wasn't there and that was additional parking, that may certainly help alleviate some of their problems, but that's, again, I know it's in concept stage right now, but it's just something I, I think they need to be aware of because you can see the situation to the existing one, which is gonna kinda be mirrored by this proposed one.
Okay. Any other comments, commissioners? I would entertain a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the application of the preliminary proposal with the seven conditions noted from staff. Any further discussion prior to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Make it easier to park. Okay, item number five, public hearing, A 23-6 Zoning Ordinance Amendment to Title IV of the City Ordinances' zoning regulations pertaining to daycare uses.
All right, so good afternoon again. As was mentioned, this is a request for a zoning ordinance amendment regarding childcare. Just a quick back, backstory here, summary here. Couple of months back, the city commission established a subcommittee tasked with exploring opportunities for the city of West Fargo to support childcare within the city, recognizing the general need out there that has been, you know, obviously in, in several media sources and something that the state is looking at and just a general problem, trying to be attacked or being attacked through several, several different avenues. And so this subcommittee has met a couple of different times and came up with a number of recommendations for how to address the, the issue. Most recently, a recommendation was brought to the city commission to establish a grant program for childcare providers within the city of West Fargo. A separate recommendation that came out of that committee or that subcommittee was a, basically a, a request to remove, remove some of the regulatory barriers to childcare as currently, you know, included within the subdivision, or excuse me, the, the zoning code. And so before you tonight is a request to modify the zoning Title IV zoning requirements in order to remove some of those regulatory barriers. Staff has gone through the Title IV in order to identify areas that we could loosen up some of the restrictions in order to provide opportunities for additional childcare within the city of West Fargo. And so that's the overall intent of this amendment, is to loosen up some of those regulations in order to increase the opportunities and the chance or the availability of, of childcare within all of, across all of our zoning districts for the most part. And so I'll talk through some of the, the summary here. Included in your packet is a, a draft ordinance, which, you know, includes a lot of the legalese for the ordinance. It's not super easy to follow, so I'll, I'll kinda walk through what, what that's basically intending to, to modify. So as the zoning code exists today, childcare is, is roughly broken up into three different categories. The first category is, is kind of home childcare of one to seven children, which for the most part is permitted by right in, in any of our residential zoning districts. The second category is a home daycare of eight to 12 children, which currently requires approval of a, what's called a provisional use permit, which is essentially a, a staff reviewed permit to application process that involves some city communication or some city outreach to properties adjacent to a proposed home childcare house that is looking to, anybody that looking to provide childcare at their home for eight to 12 children would come to the city, apply for this provisional use permit. Requires things like making sure there's adequate parking, making sure there's a fenced-in yard, making sure that there aren't any concerns from neighboring property owners. If there are concerns, I think there is a trigger where it would come before the planning and zoning commission, if there are concerns from the neighborhood. And then third, the third classification currently in the zoning code is for, you know, general childcare centers, which would be more of a commercial facility in, in some of the commercial zoning districts for any number of children. So that's how it's currently structured today for the most part. And so the recommended changes here would be to simplify that, basically combine the first two classifications and so allow child, home childcare for anywhere from one to 12 children by right in any of the residential zoning districts. So basically increasing that number from seven to 12 without the, the need to come in and request any sort of approval from the city. The second kind of major change or, since I can point to this anyway, is to increase the availability of standalone daycares as well. And so allowing standalone daycares of any size, for example, as a conditional use permit in some of our residential zoning districts, as well as allowing it by right in some additional zoning districts such as our commercial office park zoning district. Also allowing it as a conditional use permit option in the limited industrial zoning district. So that's, that's kind of the, the high level summary of the recommended changes. Be happy to talk through any of those in, in more detail. This is a public hearing item. The recommendation before you tonight is to recommend approval to the proposed amendments to the city commission. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for staff.
First, under the definition of home daycare, there's a spelling on the excluding.
Yes, we, that one was identified previously.
Okay. And the other part of that definition, providing care for up to 12 people, children, and also saying that the use of the dwelling is, shall be clearly incidental? That's, that's tough to, you know, when, when we push the limit up that it's incidental, it's then, those are almost incompatible to me. I, I just kinda got a little bit of a, well, all right.
So the intention behind that second sentence there, let's see, where is it? The use of the dwelling unit for daycare services shall be clearly incidental and subordinate to its use for residential purposes by its occupants. The intention there is to specify that this is intended to be, the use of a home as a daycare is intended to be accessory to the primary use.
As a home.
As a home, as a residence. So somebody cannot, you know, purchase a home, not live there and just operate a daycare center out of that home. That would not be allowed because that would then be the, the primary use of the.
And so that wording is, captures that?
Correct, yep.
Okay. That was the only question I had. Since it's a public hearing, open it for comments from the public. Any comments? Seeing none, close that section. Commissioners? It's been moved and seconded to approve the changes to the ordinance as published. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign? Passed. Okay, item number six, site plan review, light commercial site plan review at 2630 Cheyenne Street, Lot 3, Block 1, Eaglewood, Second Edition, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, Two Rivers Veterinary Hospital.
Thank you. The applicant has submitted a site plan, including elevation, showing a 7,654 square foot two-story structure for use as a veterinary clinic without overnight facilities along the south side of the lot with a possible future building associated with veterinary facility proposed along the north side. Under Section 4-431.5.2.8, there is a higher construction standards for areas in the corridor overlay district requiring the applicant to receive approval of the site and building plans by the West Fargo Planning and Zoning and City Commissions prior to approval of building permit. According to the submitted civil and architectural plans, building materials, setbacks and landscaping for the site are more than adequate for the corridor overlay district. The building is faced with a combination of glass, LP smart side siding, of a wood composite manufactured stone and exposed wood columns. According to the submitted landscaping plan, adequate plant units are also provided as well as required screening consisting of a six-foot screen and 15-foot buffer yard along the west side of the property. Required parking for medical offices and clinics would be one space for 200 square feet of gross floor area. A total of 48 spaces are provided which exceeds the 44 spaces required. Access would be via a 40-foot access and utility easement along the west side of the city of West Fargo lift station, going through the lot to the south and accessing Fifth Avenue West. Due to the access, the applicant is requesting a directional sign on the city-owned property adjacent to the access easement along Fifth Avenue West. Under the sign ordinance regarding directional signage, off-premise signs shall be limited to situations where access is confusing and traffic safety could be jeopardized or traffic could be inappropriately routed through residential streets. The size of the sign shall be approved by the city commission. The applicant is in the process of obtaining an encroachment agreement to allow for the signage. Under the general sign provisions, signs in residential districts and signs facing residential districts shall not be illuminated unless approved by a conditional use permit. The proposed sign facing the residential property to the west may not be illuminated unless they apply for a conditional use permit and that is approved. The signage facing east and south may be illuminated. Staff recommends approval to all the provided, all the provisions of the West Fargo City ordinances are met to ensure sufficient review is provided for building inspection and other departments. This is not a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions as a representative of the property owner.
Thank you. So basically it meets all the conditions of corridor overlay.
Correct.
And they're not asking for any conditional use for signage? The signage is, that they're proposing does go within, so the only portion that's lighted is towards the busy street.
Right. If, if they want to ask for that at a later date, they will have to apply for a conditional use.
But they are not asking for that in the signage that's presented here, correct?
Correct.
I like the access. At least we don't have to worry about battling with one off Cheyenne Street or 26th at that one because that would've been a tough one to.
Yep.
Access, so that, that's a good solution if the city sees it to grant the access easement, so.
So.
Make a motion to approve it if you're looking for approval.
I am.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the site plan as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Item number seven, update on the Planning Needs Assessment Action Plan.
Thank you. Thank you. So yeah, item set up is just a very, very brief update on the planning needs assessment action plan. So thank you for commissioners that were able to participate in last week's joint work session with the city commission. We had some good conversation that came out of that. For those that were not able to attend that working session, the video of, of the recording of that conversation is posted to the city website now, so feel free to take a look and listen to that if you'd like. You should have all received an email from me recently just outlining some of the next steps in regards to the, the action plan. We are asking for any kind of final review comments, you know, suggested edits, revisions, whatever you'd like to send. Please send that to myself or planning staff by Friday, February 24th. From there, we intend to make any edits or revisions that are necessary and then bring it through the kind of final review process, if you will. Hopefully having this, the, the final draft on the March 7th Planning and Zoning Commission agenda for some public presentation of that before bringing it to the city commission for, for the same. So that's my quick update there. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Item number eight, non-agenda items, just a note on the March and April planning and zoning meetings that they're moved from the usual spot to March 7th and April 10th. Item number nine, adjournment. Oh, wait. Any other non-agenda items that we want to cover? Nope. Adjournment. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, Dave. Yeah. Take care. See, that's all, that's called improvisation.